Today is Tuesday, April 8th, 2025. The meeting is called to order at 5:37 PM. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Manchaca.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chan.
Here.
Councilmember Ding. Councilmember Herrera Avila.
President.
Councilmember Wu.
Here.
We will now have some announcements from our Assistant City Clerk.
Tonight's meeting is livestreamed on the city's online platforms. If you wish to address the city council during tonight's meeting, we request that you please complete a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk at this time. When speaking, please state your name for the record.
First item, please.
Public comment. This time is set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items on this agenda. Comments are limited to three minutes. When speaking, please state your name for the record. If you wish to address the council, please fill out a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk. Mayor, we have not received any speaker cards tonight.
Okay, next item, please.
Interviews and appointments to the Civil Service, Community Services, Design Review, Historic Preservation, and Cultural Resource and Planning Commissions. Applicants will be considered to fill two expiring seats on the Civil Service Commission, three expiring seats on the Design Review Commission, three expiring seats on the Historic Preservation and Cultural Resource Commission, and two expiring seats on the Planning Commission. Upon closure of the recruitment, it has come to staff's attention that an unscheduled vacancy will occur after the May 31st on the Community Services Commission. Due to the number of expiring seats and vacancies on the commission, staff has requested to extend the recruitment for the Community Services Commission until April 25, 2025. Interviews for this commission will be held in May 2025 for four seats. Tonight, interviews will be held for the Design Review Commission, Historic Preservation and Cultural Resource Commission, and the Planning Commission. In addition to selecting appointments for these commissions, staff has also requesting to reappoint Howard Fong and Douglas Richter to the Civil Service Commission due to a pending case which will require continuity of the commissioners to prevent interruptions during the hearing. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers, you will each have three minutes to interview the candidates. The timer will be set, and when the orange light lights up, it will indicate when an applicant has one minute remaining. At the conclusion of the interviews for each commission, the commission will vote by ballot to appoint the applicants to the seats that are available. We will begin with interviews with the applicants for the Design Review Commission. The first interview is with Raymond Chang, applicant for the Design Review Commission.
Welcome, Raymond.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
First of all, I just want to say thank you for your interest in serving on a commission for the city of San Gabriel. We sincerely appreciate community members like yourself who are willing to step up and contribute to making a positive impact in our city. So, with so many ways for you to get involved, whether through a city commission or other local boards, as an incumbent, I guess, what motivates you to return to this commission?
I guess it's the satisfaction of seeing successful, meaningful projects happen. With many years of service in the city, day back maybe about close to 20 years ago, I seen how the city has actually moved in the right direction. Projects are getting a lot more productive and meaningful. Certain compatibility issue, preservation, more greenery, quality projects are being done. And seeing the projects that are completed, every time when I drive back and see the project completed and seeing how our input was being implemented, adds a lot to my satisfaction.
Great. I'm sorry. Thank you so much. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No problem.
Okay, great. Okay, let's see. Vice Mayor Chan, can you continue on, please?
Yes, Mr. Chang, thanks for coming in. Thanks for your service so far and your interest in reapplying. I wanted to know, because you have served before so far, what would you say is the thing you're most proud of in terms of either a single project or kind of a conceptual way that you're seeing the city develop or something specific that you've done that you're very proud of being able to contribute?
I think the thing that really make me proud to be part of this DRC process is that all the community people that I know, that I work with as a long-term architect, I've been licensed for 40 years as an architect, 30-something years as a licensed broker, and about 40 years as a general contractor. I do work with a lot of people in the community. It's their way of reflecting back to me by saying that City of San Gabriel is business-friendly. They can always work with this city. I think it make a big difference of all the city I have involved in, I work with. This city by far is the most welcoming city to builders, developers, and citizens, businesses, and concerned citizens. They listen. And the reflection that I, the feedback I get is that if they were going to choose a business location, choose where they live, where they want to have play and live, they choose San Gabriel. And I think that make me very proud to be part of it. I'll answer your question.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ding.
Hi. Oh, sorry. Hi, Raymond. Yeah, thank you. It's the continued interest in the design commissioner. I saw you serve our city of San Gabriel over 20 years. So, yeah, thank you, 20 years old. I think a community that will see our designer, a lot of the project. So, my question is, for the last 20 years, how do you have a suggestion that the project, it's more variety, more reflect our cultural, city culture? That's first question. Second, it's for the future, how do you, if you got appointed, how do you help our city have the more like historical city and our history, the culture and the current culture? How do you help? Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Council. 20 years is not a short time. But 20 years, I do see changes. I see changes from the community members mix. Their need are changing. The project that comes in, whether it's commercial, residential, whatnot, are also changing. So, what I have done and helped is to starting early in the old days, working with the San Gabriel design guidelines, both commercial and residential. And I see that being developed and continue to get better every so often. Once they start work on updating it, I try to offer whatever I can offer. So, I see improvement there. The community is also changing. Needs are changing. But what I wanted to see in the future is that I offered the Asian-American culture that I am familiar with, try to share that with the newcomers, that there are certain values that we need to respect to the city as a mission. Day back 100 years old, over 100 years old. And I think we, I try to share that with our community, that you can't come in and just cut all the trees. You can come in and change the look of the city drastically. They have to be compatible. They have to work with the city look, and also they work with the existing cityscape. So, I think I've been able to do that in sharing my past experience with the newcomers and also opening up to share with the American citizen that why some of these applicants come in with certain wish, and some will work, some will not work. I'll share with them.
Thank you.
Just got in there on time.
Taking too long. I need to cut it short.
No, no, it's not you. Councilmember Herrera Avila?
Okay, well, thank you so much for serving the community. We only have so much time, so I'm gonna dive right into it. What is it that drives you? And what's the passion behind you wanting to serve or continuing to serve?
I guess I touched a little bit earlier. I live in this area close by. I live in San Marino, but I own property in San Gabriel. I used to own a business in San Gabriel for many, many years ago. So, I worked with the San Gabriel City Council years back. I'm the one that started this cultural Chinese New Year parade between Alhambra and San Gabriel. I started that 20-something years ago. So, it's the love of our community. It's the different ethnic groups, different culture, different respect, and try to live in harmony is what keep bringing me back. It's not the pay, I know. When you got nothing, no matter how many percent it give you, it's still nothing. So, it's okay. But I enjoyed it.
Councilmember, Ms. Mayor? May I just bring a small question for our attorney? Just for clarification purposes. Now, can you explain for the audience how some commissions don't require you to live in the city? And I guess this is one of them because there's a specific professional requirement? Just so people understand, when he says he lives in San Marino.
Yes, there are residence requirements, obviously, for the city council, and I believe for the Planning Commission as well in the city. But other commissions that are formed, serving the city, don't have necessarily residency requirements. Obviously, a connection to the city is important for candidates, whether it's a business, whether it's living there for a long time and moving. But being in the area is also significant. But not every appointment for every commission in the city needs to be made of residence. Only the city council and the Planning Commission have a residence requirement, as far as I recall.
And Community Services, too.
Community Services, thank you. Okay.
Great. Thank you for that explanation.
Thanks for the question, Vice Mayor. Also, I believe the website says when you have to be a resident and when you have to be, or what the requirements are. Like, the Vice Mayor said there are certain ones, you have to be an architect and...
That's correct.
So, it is on the website. Okay, Councilmember Wu.
I don't know, at least. Thank you, Mayor. And Raymond, thank you so much for willing to keep serving and applying for this position. I think my question for you is, after so many years' services, that how you evaluate that if today's progress of the city's development has this met your expectation at the time when you entered to this role so many years ago? If yes, what we can do better for the next 10 to 20 years from your vision? And if not, what we could have done better than to make it better today?
Thank you, thank you, John. The expectation 20 years ago, if I look back and see what I see today, yes, I think we have done, the commission had done a great job. Because we gone through with a five, seven-member board to a three-member board, back to a five-member board for all the city that I saw. And I think we are at the perfect mix right now with architects and landscape architects and citizens that are interested in serving. So, that's, the mix is right. The quality of project coming in is also right. Meaning that we, because the city council done such a good job being a business-friendly city, we attract good developers, good builders, good project coming in because they know we mean business, we promise them, and we deliver. I think that's important. Some of these great projects that you see recently, some of these high-end hotel projects, shopping center projects are happening because the people coming in that do business with us see that we mean business. So, that, I think I have to thank all of you for doing the right thing for our community. Do I see a further improvement? Always. You have done a great job together with the rest of the city council by improving the infrastructure, the streets, the sewer, all of these infrastructure that is badly needed over the years because of all, for many years, we are behind. Now, I see improvement. That's important. It will give the better quality to our citizen, for one. We also work with staff. Staff is wonderful. We do tell staff that when a project is not ready, please do not bring it into this council or to the Design Review Commission because we hate to reject them or we hate to continue them. We like to approve them. But if they're not ready, we're not gonna approve them. We will tell the city staff, let's make sure the checklist is there. Make sure what we need to see is there. Make sure, so we work together as a team. So, when they first approach the city team, they will say, this is what we need done. Next time you come in, make sure all the things are there. I hope that answered your question.
Thank you very much, Raymond. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, that concludes the interview. And I just wanted to thank you for your time, for coming, and for your continued interest. And I guess you're welcome to sit in the audience if you want to wait till the end.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's always a pleasure.
Okay. Bye-bye, Raymond. Welcome.
Thank you.
Let's get you, Carolyn. First of all, I appreciate the interest that you have in continuing to serve on the commission for the city of San Gabriel. We appreciate community members like yourself who are willing to step up and contribute in a positive way to impact our city. So, I'm gonna begin with the questions. And my question is, with so many ways to get involved, whether through city commissions or boards, what motivates you to return to this commission?
What motivates me is I've always been kind of type A, overachiever type of person in everything I've done. And I want to improve my community. I've worked in different positions. I've learned a lot from my jobs. Learned about, kind of, I think people look at Pasadena and they want to emulate Pasadena. So, some of those things from Pasadena, I want to bring them here to San Gabriel when we're looking at contextual design. I'm not an architect. There are, Raymond, you're just excellent looking at plans. But I, most of my career was spent on city building. So, in city building...
Sorry about that.
Sure. Most of my career was spent on city building. And in city buildings, you don't look just at a house. You look at the neighborhood. You don't look just at, you know, a building that's being built. You look at things contextually. And with my background in downtown association management, I bring that in spades. And I look at things, and it's not just this, but I look and drive the neighborhood, walk the neighborhood, see what's missing, looking at sidewalks, trees, looking at the adjacencies with the neighbors, and making sure that that's being taken care of. Some of our commissioners don't live in the city. Some of them don't know the city like I do. I've lived here. My husband and I bought a house here in 1990, and we have lived in the same house since. My family moved to San Gabriel from Boyle Heights in 1979. So, I have a lot of history here in the city. Different parts of the city and different parts of the community. My kids went to school here in the city. And that's something that the other commissioners don't necessarily have, and I bring that to the table. And I love being a part of the city and want to make it better.
Thank you, Orlando. Vice Mayor Chan, can you please continue?
Yes, thank you, Orlando. Thanks for coming in and thanks for all the service you've already, you know, provided to the city and thanks for still being interested. I want to ask you, in your time that you've had on the commission so far, what would you say is that you're most proud of? It could be either a specific project that you were involved in on the commission or just achievements of the commission in general while you've been on it?
I think I've made, you're asking about what specific project have I made a big difference in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, there was one project. It was a home remodel, two-story home on the corner on Fairview Avenue. And they were proposing to build a nice, nice design, nice architectural plans, but it was going to be a Spanish colonial house. And I asked the owners, you know, this is gonna be the first two-story house on this street because all the other houses on Fairview are one-story. But there are also a very specific architectural style in the San Gabriel Village that was all built in one way. The San Gabriel Village has neon signs that say, "Welcome to the San Gabriel Village." And I put the question out there is, this would be fine in any part of the city, but when you're looking at building a Spanish colonial revival house in an area that was built in the 1940s, and all the little houses are this, kind of this mid-century modern ranch-style type of houses, you can deal with that facade. Yeah. You can build a two-story house that would fit in that neighborhood. And I posed that question to the owners, and they didn't build that Spanish colonial. I think they sold the house or stayed with it, and the project never came back. But when we're looking at historic preservation, when we're looking at retaining the charm of our neighborhoods, and Fairview is very specific in that one area, this was before the historic guidelines for Fairview. So, I think putting that question out there, the property owner could have come back with just a different facade. That's easy. That's really easy to do. And with my experience and my city work, I've seen that many a times over. And we're able to save the neighborhood. Yeah.
No, that's very nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ding.
Forgot. Thank you to serve the design commissioner before, and thank you to reapply. So, like, it's maybe continued with Vice Mayor, the question. So, is it specified, but I just, how do you, like, for the future, for the design commissioner? Because we are historical, the city, so we need to keep our city the historical. But, you know, the community is changing too. So, how do you have the idea to combine the historical, the culture, and with our current culture? How do you, like, combine? So, do you have any this kind of vision?
Sue, I think when projects come, I'm open to modern. We've seen modern architecture, different houses and buildings that have come into the, their projects have come through Design Review Commission. And we've also seen art. And art can take a number of different facets. And I think weaving all those pieces together, especially the art, because at one point in my career, I did work for the city of Pasadena in the arts division. And I also put public art pieces into the Pasadena community. So, when we're looking at art, that's where I have something that none of the other commissioners have because I have worked with artists. I know that we need to have an artist statement because we need to understand what the artist envisions for that, that art piece. And we also need to look at maintenance. And those are the two big questions that I have. And the maintenance makes a difference because the maintenance, this art project is gonna be there in perpetuity for at least 50 years, we hope, right? The art is only for larger projects over 25,000 square feet. So, that 1% for public art, we need to make sure that that art that's being proposed can be maintained. And there was a project on Las Tunas and Del Mar, I, Las Tunas and Valley. Sorry, Valley and Del Mar. And that project, they have, it's One Hope, I believe, is the name of the project. And they have kind of the video board. During Christmas time, they wrote, "Happy Holidays." I go, is that public art? You know, they needed to know that that was not within the scope of the public art. And that was, that public art has been coming to the design commission. So, it's important.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Herrera Avila?
Yes. You're a commissioner right now, right? So, Commissioner Romo. Thank you so much for serving and for serving with such integrity and holding the city at a higher standard. Appreciate that. Now, my question is going to revolve around why do you serve? What is that passion that drives you to serve our city?
Sue, I first started my service to the city as a commissioner in 2014, and that was in the Civil Service Commission. And one of the reasons why I wanted to serve is because I was a city employee here in San Gabriel. I left in '08 and felt that it was still important to contribute to the city in a different way, not as an employee, but as a volunteer. So, altogether, I've been on commissions for 11 years. Civil Service first, and then in 2019, Design Review Commission. And one of the things, when I was an employee of the city, a city employee said, rather jokingly, he said, "San Gabriel, building tomorrow's blight today." And that is the last thing that we should be doing. We do not build blight. We build buildings to last for their lifespan. And we want that lifespan at least 50 years because when we're looking at goods, material goods, concrete, wood, brick, you know, piping, all these things, every time you tear down a building, you're messing with the environment. So, if we build good buildings, those good buildings will stay. And I worked for the city of Pasadena, and we did a lot with historic preservation, highlighting Old Pasadena. I was their first executive director, and that was the main thing. What can you do to highlight the historic resources around you? Old Pasadena is a success. My house has charm. It was built in 1931. I love my house, and I'm gonna keep and preserve that charm. So, that's something with our city... So that's something with our city and, and San Gabriel here. You know, what can we do to build, what we're going to build new, we want it to be good. We don't want it to go back thirty years and have planning staff saying, "We're, we're proud of the fact that we're building tomorrow's blight today."
Thank you. Councilmember Wu?
Hi, Arlinda. Well, thank you so much for coming back and I know you're the Chairwoman of the DRC right now. So I have read your, um, your brief explanation about why you want to get involved to this commission. And you're really humble that you said you're not architect, but you know how important the design is. And you are not landscape architect, but you know how important it is to, uh, having a good landscaping to create a welcome atmosphere. And also about the, um, you're not artist, but you have artist vision that you want the reality, important reality of public art maintenance. So from your point of view, is the city right now in the right track on making the city a welcoming atmosphere from your point of view?
Sue, um, I feel within the purview of the Design Review Commission with Sam leading us and then our city architect, Ron, we have really good dialogue. We ask sometimes hard questions and it's a good team. The Design Review Commission deals with the, the size and scope that has set, has, that has been set by the City Council with the specific plans. When you talk about the FARs, height, all these things. So we have to work within the envelope that's already there. We cannot say, "Oh, I don't like your building, it's too tall." It has to be only a certain height. We have to deal with what council has approved. So within that purview, I feel that we have been having good discussions. We improve projects when they come forward. We don't let sloppy design or incomplete, uh, proposals that come to the DRC. We don't accept that. We have questions for the applicant, we have questions for staff. And we do our homework and we're there at the meeting, ready to discuss and make sure that we're trying to work within a certain envelope to get the best we can. And not just because we have power, but within the realm of the design and scope of the project.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, Arlinda, so that concludes the interview portion. Uh, you're welcome to stay and, and watch the rest of the interviews, but someone will contact you with the results. Thank you for your time.
Our next interview is with Janet Sanchez.
Hey, welcome, Ms. Sanchez. First of all, I want to thank you for your interest in serving on a commission in the City of San Gabriel. Uh, we appreciate community members like yourself who are willing to step up and contribute to make a positive impact in our city. So I will begin with the questions. So my question is, with so many ways to get involved, whether it's through city commissions or other local boards, what inspires you to apply for this particular commission?
Um, based on my experience and this is the way that I feel that I'd be able to contribute to my community and be more involved.
Did you want to elaborate a little bit on your experience?
Oh, sure. I'm an architectural designer. Um, I also do project management for construction. I've been doing it for over ten years and seeing all the development that's happening around San Gabriel, I find it very exciting.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Chan?
Yes, hi. Um, thank you for coming in and your interest in our commissions. Let me ask you, Ms. Sanchez, um, if you were to be selected for this commission, what is your, I guess, your goal or, or your vision for how you can contribute to this commission? You have certain visions as to how you would like to see things or, or how would you describe that?
Um, I think it's just more of involvement as far as, um, with the Design Commission, just to be more involved and to help San Gabriel preserve its charm. Um, and just to develop great relationships within the community and continue to be involved.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Ding?
Sorry, can I, thank you to apply the, the Design Commissioner. So, um, you're willing to, uh, serve the community. So based on your, uh, like, education background, so you have the, uh, architecture and the design, the field. So, uh, and do you have a professional license?
No, I don't. I'm an architectural designer, not an architect.
Okay, so, but you have experience, but not the license, okay. So based on your experience, you, you, if you, like you say, you like this, our city of San Gabriel, do you have your, any like, some, your vision, if you, uh, become the commissioner, what kind of vision you have bring to the, our city?
Um, I wouldn't care to change it so much, but again, it's like going based on preserving the charm of San Gabriel and just continuing the look that it already has.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Herrera Avila?
So my question is going to revolve around, what do you think that sets you apart, that you bring uniquely to, or would bring to this commission?
Um, I think maybe a much younger perspective, um, based on the people that I, you know, that I just met with now, you know, they're much older. And I, we were just discussing back and forth of things of, um, that we see happening around. And maybe the aspect that they're missing more in themselves is the family-based part. Um, all their kids are grown or they don't have kids. I have a younger kid, I have a toddler. So there's certain things that I, what we were discussing, I'm like, "Oh, well, that would be difficult for families." So I think it may be just a, a younger perspective.
Uh, Councilmember Wu?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Janet. Thank you so much for applying for this position. Uh, I understand that you're the owner of a design build firm. So, um, is there any, um, particular projects that you have involved in the city in the past?
Not in San Gabriel, no. Majority of my work is done in San Marino, Pasadena and Altadena.
I see. And how will you separate your personal preference? Like, you like or dislike the design from impartial design decision made for, for the city?
I don't have a select, um, I don't have a preference. My preference is more based on its environment and how it matches the environment. So it's not, um, my personal style is more contemporary, but if it doesn't fit the environment, then I'm not going to, I don't prefer that. I like it to match the environment and its surroundings.
Got it. Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, that concludes the interviews. Thank you so much, Ms. Sanchez, for being here. Uh, you're welcome to stay in the audience if you like. Um, someone will contact you at the end of the session. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next interview is with Loya Tu.
Hey, good evenings, City Councils.
Good evening. Thank you so much, Ms. Loya, for being here. Um, first of all, I will begin with the questions, but I do want to thank you for your interest in serving the commission, serving the commission again. Um, we appreciate community members like yourselves who are willing to step up and make, um, a positive impact to our city. And so my first question is, with so many ways to get involved, uh, whether through city commissions or local boards, what inspires you to, um, continue to come back to this commission?
Um, yes, thank you for the question, Denise. And I think, um, there's a few things I really appreciate. Uh, first of all, um, I really enjoy the time I spend with my, uh, fellow commissioners and working with the planners to get our design review task done on time and also to secure the, the quality of the design for the city. And meanwhile, I also learn a lot from my fellow commissioners who were, uh, who has, uh, really different background from I am as an architect. I also can see like how other commissioner address the same issue. Um, so learning from them is actually like a, a great pleasure for me. And secondly, I think, um, I am architect, so, so design is my passion. And, uh, serving in the Design Review Board actually, um, is part of my, what I can say that, um, it can be a continuity of the work I do on a daily basis, uh, but also in a community base. So I think that it is important to extend myself into a community that, um, I am fascinated about. And, uh, so yeah, that's my, my reason to come back to here.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Chan?
All right, Ms. Lee, uh, thank you for coming and thank you for your service so far on the, uh, uh, this, this too, on the, on the commission. Uh, I want to ask you, in the time that you've been on the commission so far, what are you most proud of? Either a specific project you've worked on during your time on the commission or, uh, overall achievements of the commission, uh, in general? Do you have, yeah, something that you, that sticks out in your mind as something that, uh, that you really are proud of that, uh, that you've worked on?
Um, I think in my turn, in the past of several years, um, we've been, witnessed a lot of, um, uh, large-scale development in the city. And, um, I think that is something, um, I am pretty proud of when I, uh, review those projects, um, in the commission because, um, mixed-use project is one of my, my expertise. Um, when I work on a lot of oversea projects, uh, in China, uh, in like the last two decades. And I would love to, um, be able to bring my, uh, experience and expertise to be, um, to actually convert those experience and, and to enhance, um, the project we're building here in City of San Gabriel. So, um, those project, I, I don't have particular project in mind that is the, my, I'm most proud of. But, um, generally speaking, those larger project that, um, you have to focus on resolving a lot of, um, um, vertical issues, like with the residential on top and retail at the bottom. And also you have to, uh, be really cautious about how to, um, interface with the, the city sidewalk and also, um, in a way, how to, um, mitigate the, the traffic. And, um, I actually has a lot of thought about those projects in the, in the city because, um, um, we have all those misuse project in the large, um, the Valley Boulevard, San Gabriel, that, um, uh, created like, uh, really major absence of a building mass. However, um, we would love to be able to make those project more pedestrian-oriented, a, uh, more livable and more human scale. So those are the efforts on me and my fellow commissioners are trying to engage and, and integrate into the project. Um, so, um, I also learn a lot from my fellow, um, Chair Romo and she's expertise in, she has expertise in, in vegetation and plants and, and, and landscaping. So that is also another aspect that we would love to be able to, um, to put into the, the project. So, um, I think I, I don't have a particular project, but it's the type of project I'm.
Yeah, I get, I get your point. Thank you. That's great. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Ding?
Yeah, hi, Loya, yeah. Thank, thank you to continue to want to apply, serve our Design Commission. Yeah, and, uh, uh, so based on your three term, so I think our city should have the some, our cultural, historic culture. So just want to know the, what's your vision for the future? The outside that, uh, the building, the, the design? Keep our historic, uh, cultural and, and also add our element for the current community, the, the cultural? So do, you have a, some kind of, uh, some vision you can share with us?
Um, in terms of the, of the, you mean the, the cultural in regarding the, the architectural design?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, I, I think one of the, the main, uh, attraction of City of San Gabriel is, uh, the Mission. And the Mission Pacific Plant has really well-written to actually to enhance the, the, the design characteristic of the, of the, the area. And that in a way, it helps to preserve the, the characteristic of the, the area and also expand to the, uh, surrounding, uh, neighborhood. Um, meanwhile, I think the, the idea and also the vision for San Gabriel is actually like, um, opens up to more, um, modern, contemporary, uh, design that, um, has, um, has the, the, the appeal to like a younger generation workforce and become like a, a, a attractive, um, um, attractive residential, um, like, uh, how to put it? I mean, we want to attract young people and, um, we want to attract the, the workforce and, and also that's how the city had the, um, had the, the vibe and also can actually to, to, how to put it? It just made the city more, uh, attractive and, and engaging. And I thought that's why we, a lot of times when we are in the review, uh, we encourage to see those, um, new attempt and, uh, the, a modern design and new material. But at the same time, we are really cautious about the scales of the building. And we don't, we don't like to see like, um, overall, overly like overwhelming, uh, building massing and, and like with the disregard the surrounding. And that's what I've been envisioning. And as a matter of fact, um, the, those mixed-use project type has very good, um, uh, potential. And we do have a lot of project being built that is pretty modern and, and pretty playful. And I think, I think those are the, the right type of appeal to the, to the, the people that we would like to bring to the, the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
And Councilmember Herrera Avila?
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Tu, I just want to say thank you for your service, your dedication and the knowledge that you bring, um, to the commission and to us, our city. Uh, my question is going to revolve around what sets you apart? What's that unique thing that you feel that you bring? And what sets you apart from the rest of the people applying today?
Um, yes, um, I think the, the unique thing about me is actually, um, I, I don't live in San Gabriel. And I am a practice architect and I also have my, uh, real estate development firm. So I am a entrepreneur and my base is Los Angeles. Um, so I thought that is given me like a really good, um, advantage and bring a lot of, um, I become a bridge to, to bring some new ideas and like different ideas, not necessarily the best idea, but, uh, different ideas to, to the, the city and to the, to the body. Uh, because the type of work I, I do in City of LA and also, um, the community I engage in the, in the professional world and actually opens up like. in the professional world, it actually opens up like many different channel for me to have, engage with the group of people and also the knowledge and the information so that I can share with the, with the board. And it's, it's part of the diversity of the board. That's what I thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wu?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Hi, Ms. Tu. So good to see you here again and thank you so much for serving. And I'm so grateful to hear you get along well with your fellow commissioners. While your resume is so impressive still, you have knowledge about the land acquisitions, financial study, project management, and you're entrepreneurs for your own business. Can you share with us that what is the most challenged time that reviewing the projects in our city and how you overcome that? Can you share just one?
I think the challenge we have is actually the standard of the design document is not clearly defined. And we have seen many applicants and presentation package that is overboard, is like perfect. And then, I mean, it's not perfect, but it's really professional, well-done. And that makes our work much easier. But on the other hand, then maybe like just due to the nature of the, of the work and the applicant can only afford to hire designer that who is not experienced enough and not qualified enough to put together the documentation up to the standard. So I thought that there's something we could improve is actually to have a gatekeeper in the, in the planning department or either the city architect can serve as that role so that the documentation we receive can be above the standard of, I mean, of the, of the city required. So that that would make our work much more smoother and also more productive during the review process. Thank you.
Just make a, just try to clarify it. So you mean that the definition of our city's terms is not clear enough or the person who submit the plan cannot define that well enough?
I believe that the term is, I mean, is not like, is not like a manual, right? I mean, when you submit a set of documentation, you don't have the manual to have the checkbox to check it one by one. A lot of times it has to do with whoever takes in the case to have like the best judgment about the quality of the package if that has been meet, has met the requirement of the board. But on the other hand, I don't think as the body we given very specific requirement like, oh, this is exactly what we want to see. And we have to see this before we get into the review. So that is another thing that we don't have currently in the, in the meeting. So in a way, like the package we receive, they, the quality, it varies a lot. And, and I understand that some of the cases is just really difficult because applicant has to work with the designer or architect they hire. And that detaches the quality of the documentation. So I just hoping that we can establish like maybe a sample set, like we need to have all those drawing. You need to fulfill all those drawing, just check the box and then, and all the informations layout in the, in the drawing so that we can be clearly like communicated.
Well, thank you very much. This is really great comments. I think maybe we can implement AI in the future. But thank you so much for that. And I, it's a good question.
We can never replace the human.
Samantha, Samantha, that's your job.
So I don't have my job anymore, right?
One person got it, but okay. So thank you so much for spending the time with us and answering all our questions. You're welcome to stay and listen to the remaining meeting sitting in the audience, but someone will contact you later. Okay? So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, so that concludes the interviews for this commission. Does any council member have questions for staff before we vote? No? Okay. So we're going to vote after every commission, the block of interviews. The ballot is in front of you. We will mark it and give it to Marilyn and then we'll, and then we'll continue on. She will, she will not sequester it. Yeah, she will give it back to you. So let's take a moment to vote and then. Yes, our city attorney would like to make a comment?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. One of the commissions, the Civil Service Commission, there's a recommendation from staff to appoint the existing two, two members back to the commission. And the reason for that is that there's an ongoing hearing and changing the commission, structure of the commission at this point in time would potentially delay it or you would have to restart in some instances, depending how deep they are into the, into the hearing. So at some point in time, Mayor, a brief discussion by council and a vote on that as well.
Yes, well, we'll do that at the end after the, because we do have people waiting here. So let's get through those interviews. Thank you.
Mayor, the votes are in and we have four votes for Raymond Cheng, five votes for Ehrindo Romo, one vote for Janet Sanchez, and five votes for Luya Tu. The three positions that'll be appointed looks like it's Raymond Cheng, Ehrindo Romo, and Luya Tu.
Thank you. And our city attorney will be passing along, returning the ballots to us. So thank you for that. And so the next commission that we will be interviewing for would be the Historic Preservation and Cultural Resource Commission. City Clerk, would you, do you have a few comments to make?
I do. Mayor, Nicholas Conrad has withdrawn his application from consideration. Eric Weeks has notified staff that he will not be able to attend tonight's interview due to a family emergency. As an active member, he stated that he is still interested in serving on the commission. And I spoke with Samantha earlier and she believes that he is the only architect on the commission.
And we need to have at least one architect, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So our first interview tonight will be with Kyle DeVryne.
Okay.
Point of clarification, please, Mr. Mayor and maybe the attorney. Since we have, since Mr. Conrad withdrew and there are three spots open and three applicants, this isn't unanimous consent? There still needs to be a full process?
Well, they are here. We didn't realize earlier the situation with Mr. Conrad.
Yeah, actually, the way, we, that's like two or three years ago, we approved because any like, especially for the, you have a new council member. So let the new council member to have opportunity to interview them.
I think the city manager, I believe, did a poll and the majority of us wanted to interview every candidate, even if there were.
Even if it is three to three?
Yeah.
I'm not talking about incumbency.
Well, but just, yes.
Three people for three spots.
Yes.
Okay, I'm okay.
Except for the Civil Service Commission because of the special circumstance.
I understand. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Welcome, Kyle.
Hi, how are you?
Little sidebar here.
Yeah, that's okay. That's okay.
So first of all, I did want to thank you for coming back and for your continued interest in this commission. You know, we appreciate all community members who step up and want to make a positive impact in our city. So I'm going to begin with the questions.
Sure.
And my question to you is, there are so many ways to get involved, whether it's through city commissions or other local boards. What motivates you to return to this particular commission?
Well, first I would, you know, what motivated me before was just the preservation of the city to its uniqueness that, that it contains, right? Throughout, throughout the streets and the homes and everything. Of course, with the Mission District and everything else. And then what's bringing me back this time around is to kind of finish the work that we've, we've already started with the historical, or with the historical context statement that we've done, as well as starting to map out the streets and the districts around here for their historical value so that we can kind of start getting an overview of the city as to see what areas we can preserve and educate the community with the homes that they have and the districts that they have and being able to come and look at this historical context statement and be able to see this, the history of the city that's been kind of laid out for them and to see the uniqueness that they live in. And hopefully that will drive them towards, you know, looking at the communities and the homes that they live in and, and have a different perspective of them. So I'd like to continue that as well. So that's the reason why I'm back today as well.
Thank you so much. I'm now passing on to Vice Mayor Chan.
Hello, sir.
Hi.
Thanks. Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Thanks for reapplying and thanks for all the hard work you've done so far. My question is, so since you are returning or hoping to return and you've been serving for a while so far, can you tell me about maybe the most, maybe one specific thing or maybe in general, something that you're most proud of? Either a specific thing that you've accomplished on the commission or, or an overall direction? I know when Mayor just asked you a question, you mentioned about, you mentioned the good work that you've started. Can you maybe elaborate on that a little bit?
Sure. Well, the historical context statement is basically just a document that lists the history of the city from its beginnings to certain areas of the city that, you know, what, what this neighborhood was at one time and, you know, another neighborhood at the other time. You know, looking at those to kind of educate people and hopefully that they will take a look at that and, and see that the areas that they live in are, are unique. And if they want, you know, so that they can kind of look at those areas and protect them. With that, you know, we had to make kind of a difficult call a couple of months ago. There is the project that, the expansion of the San Gabriel Cemetery in which there was a historical home that was found out that the home on the property that they were going to extend it was indeed historical. We did all of our research on that and, you know, the house was in a little bit of, a little bit, but it was in quite a bit of disrepair. So we had to make a tough call on that as to whether or not the preservation of that home benefited the city more in that preservation or extending and expanding a already historical designated, well, a historical asset of the, of the community, which was the cemetery. A lot of community members weighed in on that and we made a decision to allow for the expansion to happen. And we're, you know, to say we're proud of that, or I was proud of that, that proud isn't probably the right word, but it just went to show me that as we look at the city, that not everything is, is cut and dry. There are some, there are some pockets and envelopes that you have to look at to make sure that you are benefiting the city. So that is, that was something that I learned a lot in that process. And I think what the decision that we made and then it all the way up to the city council made on that was the right decision for the, for the city. And I'm pretty proud of that.
Great, great, thank you. Appreciate you.
Councilmember Ding?
Thank you, Kyle. You continue to apply to serve the commission?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for service. So based on your term, so for the future, so you have any like some vision or like a big challenge you, you wanted to, for your vision, so for our historical?
Yeah, I think the next challenge is, is that what's the historical context statement is, is looked at and as far as all this historical districting that we're, we're looking at in these, the maps of the city. I think the next challenge on that is, for me personally, is to kind of look at these and say, in educating the community as to the areas that they live in, right? So that as a homeowner in those districts, that there's, there's certain things that they have to look out for too, right? That may, may or may not, you're not going to just be able to go in and tear down this house anymore, right? You're going to have to do, you have to check off a couple of boxes before you want to do that. I think there's a lot of complexity with that and I look forward to that challenge and seeing how I, how I will come out on that and how we will educate the people who live in those homes at that time to see what the values are of, of doing that. And I think that's the next challenge in the next year or next two years is to get those, that mapping done and then also going in there and seeing the value of that in these historical districts, if they do get designated as historical districts or overlay zones or whatever that, that it's going to come out, how that's going to benefit the city. And I think that's the next challenge and I'm looking forward to that.
Okay. Thank you for the suggestion, especially for the education for the historical, the provision area, how the city can do something, let this public owner to have the wellness regarding this historical property.
Yeah, I think that, you know, I think as us as being the commission and kind of presenting findings and what we find to the city council is to just work together and see, you know, see how those, the benefits. I have no doubt that everybody who's sitting here at the, at the city council wants to preserve the uniqueness of the city, you know, to its fullest, to its fullest capacity. And so I, that's the other thing is I look forward to working with all of the commissions, planning commissions, city council on, on educating people on that. And I think that the city council is a great, they're out in the community doing that all the time. You are the face of the city. I, as a historical commissioner, can walk in and not, you know, somebody doesn't recognize me right off the bat, where I'm sure you all walk through the community and are getting questions all the time. So, so your face is out there and doing what you do is going to be a great asset to helping us both work together to preserve the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Herrera Avila?
Thank you. Commissioner De Bryant, did I say that correct?
De Brent.
De Brent?
De Brent.
De Brent?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a, it's a tough one.
I'll try to get it right. I'll try to get it right. But thank you so much for involving, I mean, getting involved and just putting in a lot of time and something as the commission, a historic commission, right? It's very important to the city that we have people that care about the history and preserving. And I do see that with you. What are the, what are some areas you would like to see the city support more in or the council support in more, if any? And then what are some, also some areas that you feel have been untapped where you guys can help?
I would say, and to go back to the, what I would love to see the city do a little bit is so we can avoid situations that I think happened with the, the house on the cemetery property, which was a historical home that fell into great disrepair. And for the city to kind of like, to look at homes that. to kind of like, to look at homes that, once we get these districts laid out and to see that and to, I guess code enforcement is one way of doing it, but to look at some houses that, and to show people that, hey, if you keep your home up and you do, you know, we won't, I think if that home, which was falling into state of disrepair, if community members were calling and saying, hey, this is, this is falling into a little bit of disrepair, it's unsightly, and the city going and looking at that and talking with the homeowners and saying, hey, if you do this little bit of work and give them resources on how they can get the work done, whether it's through programs through Habitat of Humanity, if they qualify for those, to get their houses back into that shape, then I think we have a better chance of preserving things that, homes and buildings and areas that we have, if people know really what they have and the value of that. I know that that's unrealistic sometimes because of different, different resources people have. But to get the city council and the, to really help look at those, those homes that might be falling into that kind of a state and helping those owners get them into a state of repair, that would help preserve it and then, so we won't have to make tough calls like that in the future.
And do we have a couple of seconds? Yes. And then the second question that I had was, are there any areas that you see that have been untapped from your commission?
Have been what? I'm sorry.
Untapped or like overseen?
You know what? I, to be honest, no, I don't think so. I think, I think we work very well with, with the city council. We have in the past. I think we understand what our position is and how we work together with that. I would, would like to see possibly more meetings. You know, it is hard to get everybody together at times. I would say that's the one thing. I think our meetings are not on a really general schedule and sometimes it's kind of hit and miss. And I'd like to see more. So if there was a short side, it would be more meetings. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Wu.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Kyle.
Hi, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you. And thank you so much for applying, reapply for this position. And thank you so much for your service. I will be asking some questions a little bit different from other colleagues. It's a, I feel, you know, for your, as to your career, that you know that Netflix has, you know, they have a film in our city and one of the series is called Brother's Son. So that movie has made our city getting more famous globally. So from your perspective, I mean, how you think that we can convert the historical resource into the value to attract more filming industry to our city? Because I think that will be, even there's some film company, they rented our city hall to film. And I truly think that we have a huge potential because of your efforts and contributions that make our city historical preserved and making the, you know, the works out. So how we can just make this is more reality. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, I think in those cases is to reaching out to location managers who go out to the cities and look for uniqueness, whatever the creative vision is of the film, right? And a lot of areas can be, you know, can be covered by that. So a lot of it depends on what the script is calling for, but your location managers and reaching out to the location managers is probably, or in the studios who do that, you know, some outreach in that direction so that they know about it. You know, film companies are always looking for as little resistance as far as fees and everything goes like that. That helps for sure to make competitive, you know, competitive fees and having, having areas that can accommodate crews and trucks and everything else like that, too, are good areas, good things to be looking out for. As far as shooting in the city for the historical value of it would just depend on the script and how historical it is, if that's what the script calls for or what the, what the film calls for. And other than that, it could just be they just need a Mediterranean house with a great big pool in the back and they, you know, whatever it is. And they, they like the look of it, right? It's accommodating for them. So those are kind of the things that they got. But this city is very unique in that respect. And I know that they're always looking for opportunities like that. So it's just, it's pretty much a marketing game, to be honest with you in that respect. Does that answer your question?
Oh, yes. And also, I think that because people thought that we are a good fighter, you know, from the movie, then we are not. So we would like to just get more diverse that people can understand from a different perspective. But this is great. I mean, I hope that you will be, I truly appreciate and I hope you can continue to serve. And if you do see any opportunity that will be benefit the city, please do share with us and we will just reach out.
I always do. Anytime somebody, they mention it and they say something, I definitely throw San Gabriel in the mix for taking a look at it. So definitely do that.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I also want to clarify with Brother's Son, they showed Cal State, San Gabriel. We have no Cal States here. No universities here.
And they shot it?
I actually had questions about that.
They shot it here at the, at City Hall?
No, in the movie, they actually had like a Cal State, San Gabriel, that was one of the venues, or one of the places Brother's Son was highlighting.
Okay.
And so people were confused, well, those who watched, oh, where is that your university? No, we don't have one.
We can do the online, online university, the stay up.
Of San Gabriel, yes. So Kyle, well, thank you so much for spending the time with us, answering our questions. We really appreciate it. You're welcome to stay out there in the audience until we take the vote. But someone will contact you to let you know the results.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Welcome, Eric. I wanted to just begin with the questions and the interviews. I wanted to thank you for, for serving and for continuing to have an interest to serve. We appreciate community members like yourself who step up and who really genuinely want to make a positive impact in our, in our city. So with so many ways for you to be involved, whether it's with the city commissions or local boards, what motivates you to return to this particular commission?
What's been motivating me is just seeing the progress that has been happening in the commission that I've been in. We've been involved with quite a few things that were very eye opening for me as much, as much as I love the city and I've known the historical relevance that's been here. I mean, it's a totally different world to be sitting here and being presented with, you know, the documents and all the history that's here and the history that we want to maintain here. So yeah, that's really been driving me here. So I thank you all for the opportunity that I've had the last couple of terms and I love the opportunity to continue.
Thank you, Eric. I'm going to pass it along to Vice Mayor Chan now.
Hello. Thank you, Eric. Thanks for coming in and thanks for your service so far. And I guess, kind of piggybacking on Mayor Menchaca's question, I want, maybe if you could get more specific into specific accomplishments or things that you've accomplished during your time already on the, on the commission, either a specific project or, or at least a specific, or a general direction that the commission's going, that you're really proud of and that you would like to be a part of continuing?
No, yeah, I was fortunate enough to be invited to, when the city was presented the award for the historical context statement. So that was something I was very proud of, that I was able to be involved in that and actually be there to accept the award for the city. I was also fortunate enough to be here when the proposal for the cemetery expansion, and I got to hear some of the history involved in there that I didn't know much about. I know that that property was a little hidden and being able to see the photos and, and the proposals that are coming forward to maintain some of the historical relevance, but also give the opportunity for the cemetery to expand and allow themselves, you know, some feasibility in the city. So those are a few things. I know that we're working with the architecture firm that is surveying the city and trying to get a little bit more specifics on historical properties and communities throughout the city. And seeing that progress in the last couple of years is, I mean, it's, I've enjoyed every moment of it so far.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Ding.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Eric. Continue to serve our historical commission. And so my question is based on your, this is, I think, a two term already, right? So what's the biggest challenge for the historical? And what's your future vision?
My future vision is to continue. I think the biggest challenge is maybe getting it out. A lot of people aren't aware of some of the commissions, especially the historical. Everybody knows about the mission and they know about, you know, the city and all, but a lot of people don't know about the city in particular. They don't know about, you know, the, the idea of the preservation that we were aspiring to maintain. I know right now, like, I'm trying to get my son involved and show him things that are off, away from his tablet or from his computer, right? Everything is, if it's not a 15 second clip on TikTok or YouTube or whatever it is, he's not interested. So I, moving forward, I want my kids to go out. Like, let's go to the mission. Let's take a walk when they shut down the city for festivals or, you know, events. Like, let's, that's what I'm about. I want to get out. I miss, if I was young again, I'd be riding my bike up and down these streets, you know, nonstop. But you don't see that very much anymore and it's kind of sad. I feel it's a little sad.
So the commissioner also have like for the, like you say, how do you educate your community to understand and where the mission? And also, did you have any suggestion for our city, city council level to help? Yeah?
It's kind of hard only because everything seems to be so social media based nowadays to attract any form of attention. And I, I mean, I'm not as savvy. I mean, I do post like my kids for family that are out of the country or out of the state. But it seems like everything now is so catered to a 15 second video or a 30 second video. I love to say that I wish the city was much more tech savvy and, you know, TikTok famous. But I also don't want that to be the way that we kind of get everybody out there. So I appreciate all the events and all the community outreach. And like, I participated in the San Gabriel Police Department Community Academy. And I, I like to see that there's still the program and more people are getting involved. So as long as we get more outreach on what's being offered to, so you are aware of what the city has to offer and how to understand how the city works, that's something we can do. You know, outreach the kids at the schools and whatnot or at the rec centers. But yeah, I'm sorry to say, it's probably going to be through social media, but I really, I really don't care for that that much.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Herrera Avila.
Yes. Interesting. Very, very interesting. So 30, 15 seconds of, did you know that this building was built here by our PIO, right? I think that would be kind of cool.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what I'm hearing from you. We're not that tech savvy, but we're working on it. But Commissioner Urina, thank you so much for serving in this commission. It's very, very important being that San Gabriel is the birth parents of Los Angeles. And that's a history that not that many people know and we should be striving to let everybody know. I mean, San Gabriel Valley, San Gabriel Mountains, San Gabriel River, everything derives from here. And it's a very impressive city. And we got to get, do a better job on that, getting it out there. Given that my questions were basically answered already, what do you see some exciting opportunities? Do you see some exciting opportunities to collaborate with anybody that you would love to get help with, that you know of, or like some kind of organization out there? Do you have any, any advice?
I've thought about it and all paths lead to social media, for whatever reason. And like I said, I'm not as savvy as I probably should be, although my kids are on it 24 hours a day. I should be picking up on it. And I do have a 13 year old son who is actually the reason why I even came to apply for this. He's the one that, you know, basically told me I should give it a shot since I was a good dad. So that, that moved me this direction. And, you know, yeah, so, so, yeah, he's motivating me and now I'm trying to bring him along. And like I said, partnering up with, right now, it's like there's so many of these, I don't know, TikTok, YouTubers, Instagrammers that are, you know, food based or whatnot, right? Like that's, they go around the city and I get kind of excited when then I'm like, oh, I've been, I've been there. It's in our city, right? But I don't know how that partnership works. I know a lot of times it's revenue based for them, right? Not so much what they really want to bring to this city. But I, like I'm saying, partnering up with, it seems like unfortunately, it's going to have to be with people that are much more savvy with this technology that can put a spotlight on the city. Like my son can tell you, he knows like in a minute, you know, those are, that's something that I listen to, right? Because I want to hear about LA and all the other cities and, and I, and he kind of chuckles because he thinks I'm old for listening to radio, right? I'm not that old, but he thinks I'm old for listening to the radio. But, but yeah, I think that's, like I said, unfortunately, I think that's the direction a lot of times we have to look as a feasible option to partner up with all of these kids that have millions of followers that are at their fingertips.
Just a point of clarity, if you can explain what's the radio? I'm just kidding. I'm kidding. I thought that was YouTube.
I mean, I do listen to a podcast. So I'm a little bit above the curve than just the radio.
I listen to the radio, too.
Yeah, I do, too.
You're not alone. Does that conclude your questions? Okay. Councilmember Wu.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And Eric, thank you so much for your service and coming back to reply for Commissioner. Are you any fans of any sports?
Unfortunately, I am not. I probably should be. I'm half Mexican, half Argentine, so soccer should be my number one thing. But it's not, it's not. I do watch rugby. That's basically the only sport I really.
I see. Well, the reason I'm asking that because World Cup is coming and also LA28, which is Olympics is coming as well. I had the privilege to meet the Mayor Karen Bass and also eighty some cities representative and also the LA28 committee directors. I'm trying to sell and also my colleague as well, trying to make them aware that City of San Gabriel has a really fruitful history, you know, from not only in the region, but also the United States. We are the fourth, we have the mission and the Archangel mission. So what is the selling point? We say the selling point is the assets and something we can present it to our LA28 committee that the City of San Gabriel can be a part of the Olympics cooperating city as a part of the game. Because we are, we have no value here. We are kind of small. But we can do some more celebrations or like ceremonial things, events in our city. So from your point of view, as the current commissioner, what assets you think from your perspective that can make our city more visible to, among, with so many cities as competitor to us?
Well, just the melting pot of cultures that we have in the city, right? We've got miles and miles of food, some probably the best food in the world, right? That's going to attract anybody on any given day. And then, I mean, last but not least, we have probably one of the nicest backdrops that most cities can, can have, right? Just standing in front of the mission alone and just staring at that, at that skyline and the mountain behind us. I mean, who wouldn't want to, right? Who wouldn't want to be here and take a photo? So if we can attract that, our backdrop, our food, our culture, and just the camaraderie that we do have here in the city, we may not have a big venue, but you don't need a venue, right? I mean, you could have multiple restaurants participating in some kind of Olympic special or food committee or something like that, right? We could have a committee of just restaurant owners and venues that could partner up and see what they could offer, right? I'm not in the food space. You know, I work for LA County Metro, so I, I'm well aware. I'm not in the food space, you know, I work for LA County Metro, so I, I'm well aware of the Olympics. I know at work, we're, we're working pretty hard and prepping for that too. And yeah, it isn't a hard sell to come here, to be honest with you. And we're not far, far away from, from the city.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor.
I think Vice Mayor is itching to say something.
Just a reminder, we have fantastic hotels.
Oh, yeah.
The food and the hotel, sure.
No, no, no.
Yeah.
Food comes first sometimes, you know?
Sometimes, all the time.
Also the Mission Playhouse, too.
I saw Eric, it's working for the LA County Metro, right? So it's related to the 2028. So how can the Metro to help our city resident to go out to watch the game or let like falling asset, as they could come to our city, use the your opportunity?
Yeah, Metro's done that many times where they partner up with the city and they promote a venue, a concert, a street fair or a flea market or restaurants, right? And they make it a destination and they'll let you know, you know, what bus route, what train you could exit, whether it's, you know, whatever city it might be. So like I'm saying, it's very easy partnerships. Everyone's going to want to partner up right now.
I wish you become the liaison.
Now we're crossing into professional level. But we do have, like you mentioned, Golden Streets, Mission to Mission, Metro was a partner there and it came to our city. So you are absolutely correct, there's always different ways and we have two representatives here. Councilmember Wu is the lead for San Gabriel and then Vice Mayor Chan is the alternate, so.
And I actually use Metro quite a bit, so I wanted to remind everybody, the 487 bus from Del Maran Valley, straight shot on the 10 freeway to downtown LA Union Station.
Yeah.
Very, very convenient.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Fully.
And we're getting better.
Okay, well, lots of excitement here. So let me just kind of close the interview now. I want to thank you for spending the time to come to City Hall, to meet with us, to answer our questions. We do appreciate it. You're welcome to stay in the audience there and we're going to be taking the vote shortly.
Okay, thank you all for the opportunity.
Thank you, Eric. So before we begin the vote for this commission, does any council member have any questions for staff before we vote? Okay, I see none. We're going to take a five-minute break to 7:15. Okay, so we're going to resume the interviews. It's 7:16. Assistant City Clerk, can we have the next candidate?
We're voting.
Oh, I'm sorry, the results. I'm sorry, can we have the results of the vote, please?
We have five votes for each of the three candidates, Kyle DeVrain, Eric Urina and Eric Weeks.
So let's continue on with the next commission, Planning Commission.
Before we continue, Mayor, I wanted to announce that one of the applicants, Gary Liu, will not be able to make it today. So we do have two applicants. Our first applicant is Fang Li.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes, I'll make the other, I'll have.
Okay.
You can still vote for him if you want, but we have two candidates, so we can't stop that.
Correct. Got it.
You have the rosemary, you have the information, it's on your interview, it's not a requirement for you. You are free to vote for any of the candidates.
So that's the difference between like the other one where there was a form of withdrawal of his application.
Yeah, he's just asking, he didn't review from consideration. He's just not.
They're different.
The mic does work? It sounds like it does it? We can hear you just fine. Just project as much as you can.
Okay, okay.
Okay, hello Fang, welcome. Thank you for coming to this interview. Thank you for your interest in continuing to serve as a Commissioner in the City of San Gabriel. We appreciate community members who take the initiative to step up and who want to make a positive impact in our city. I'm going to begin with the questions. My question is, with so many ways to get involved, whether it's through city commissions or local boards, what motivates you to return to the Planning Commission?
I'm enjoying the experience, that's why I'm returning. So to elaborate, the, I enjoy being in the group, being the board member, right? I like how the process goes, right? Debating, getting the information from the staff, researching more informations, I like, I enjoy that. And also the, like, the experience of having, you know, like, recommendations to you guys, right? And the end results that we see, so that is the experience that I am enjoying, that's the reason that I'm coming back.
Okay, thank you so much. Vice Mayor Chan.
Yes, sir. Thank you for coming and thank you for the service you've already given and thanks for reapplying. I want to know, in your time serving on the commission, is there a specific accomplishment that you're very proud of in your time on the commission? Either a specific project or, or a certain direction that the commission's going in that, that really, that you can think of, that you are proud of, that?
I wouldn't say it was the results of the, from the decision made by the Planning Commissions. However, the memorable moment was the AT&amp;T Tower in, in our community that they proposed inside the cemetery, right? So that was kind of like memorable moment that we debated. Unfortunately, we passed, right? But I was the solely vote no. However, the community actually get involved and they understand, they learn about the negative side effects of having a tower close to the, inside the communities and then they kind of rally up and voices to you guys. And finally, I don't know what happened, but it's, the project didn't happen. That was a memorable moment.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ding.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Fang, you continue to come back, apply the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
So, yeah, and so based on, I think that's like a biggest challenge is regarding the, this, our planning. So so far we have a lot of like, especially mixed project or even, even new home, okay? So how can you, your vision regarding our city, the traffic situation?
It's a challenge, right? So sometimes what I look at it is, even, even on the board, we have different opinions, different voices, right? Some probably will be on the right, some probably will be on the left, some probably will be right in the middle. It is a challenges. The, the question is, what is the impact on the traffic, right? So I seen the city is heading toward synchronizations, installing fiber optics lines. Those are, those are, in my, in my opinion, humble opinion, there's the right directions to, to head into, right? But as we, as the city grows, as the population grows, there would be more impact to the traffic that's inevitable, right? So we got to face that. But how are we going to face it? How are we going to learn from other cities? That is the most important thing for a city like us to kind of like do a research, learn and, you know, like, and continue with the, our traditions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Herrera Avila.
Thank you. Commissioner Li, is it Li or how do you pronounce it? Li, Commissioner Li, thank you so much for your service and serving our community, especially in a commission like the Planning Commission. I mean, all the commissions are important, but the Planning Commission is almost like the final seal for where the city is going as well. I mean, everybody has a different things that they can bring, but I want to know what you, what do you bring to this commission body that's different and unique from everybody else?
I would say my smile. No, just joking. My personality, right? Seriously, I, what I bring to the table is the, my approach to every challenges, to every, every situations that brought in front of the, the commissions, right? My approach is like listening, doing a research and not taking extreme sides and not forgetting what our city stands for, right? Our city, sometimes I joke about myself, like the city has a mission, we literally have a mission, right? So the city has a mission. I try not to forget about what we are, who we are, right? We are a small city. We are trying to evolve, but not forgetting the traditions, small city environment. So what I bring to the table is, you know, the balance, like tone of voice, judgment calls, that is not too extreme, nor left, nor right, right? So that is what I bring to the table. Thank you.
Councilmember Wu.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Mr. Li. Well, first of all, thank you again for joining the state of the city that I have made the presentation. The city would not be what we have seen today without your efforts and your colleagues' efforts.
Thank you.
I remember the first time when I interviewed you, it was two years ago, that you talked about the balance of the city development and the progress. So when you look back and look at today, is, do you think that today is, is actually called tomorrow, that time when you enrolled as the Commissioner two years ago?
I would take the time machine back two years or three years ago. So the question is, what direction the city is heading, right? Are we still on path of the balance? I would say somewhat yes, somewhat yes. Would have been a little bit better, like, if we balance it with the housing crisis, solution for the housing crisis with, with the mind of like a single-family homes, right? So that would have been, in my opinion, humble opinion again, right? That would have been better, but we haven't taken that step yet to solve the, the housing crisis in our city, right? We have taken a step of single-family homes, a lot more than, you know, affordable housings and other things, right? So, so, but we are in the right directions. We are almost the balanced way of mixing the two, right? Or I would say like with the traditional small-town Or I would say like with the traditional small-town environment.
So you think that affordable housing, so far, we will have the first one on Delmar and Main Street, which is the affordable housing for senior? And what your, so you think that we would need more affordable housing in the future?
I was, I would say we should have, I might not be like the most updated person, right? Like, I think we should have like some kind of concrete written down for the city, right? Like, what is, if you build this size, you need to include this much of affordable housing and so on, right? But I don't think that is there, we are there yet, right? So that's, that's what I meant.
I see.
But as, as a like building, like a new affordable housings and the others, like multi-mix use and stuff, I think we are heading in the right directions.
I see. Well, I think that is a problem for many cities as well. I mean, especially we have rent a number, we have to build like 3,023 units within eight years, you know, under the housing element agreement. So, yeah, we are all working to make that balance, but thank you so much, Mr. Lee, for your service again. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
I was just going to add, with Rena and Samantha could give you a copy of it. It actually says, the 3,000, what percentage has to be low and below, there's different terms, low, average, and moderate-low. So it is outlined, but it's again, the space, having developers interested in even providing that kind of housing, so. But there is a plan out there, but is it realistic? That's the question that I think every city is struggling with, so. But anyway, I just wanted to thank you for coming, for spending time with us, for answering our questions. And you're welcome to stay in the audience and wait till we vote, or, you know, someone will also contact you either way.
Sure.
Okay? Thank you Feng.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Once again, I just very happy to be here and then be a person to send you guys up for recommendations for your considerations.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night. Good evening, Jerry. Thank you so much, first of all, for your interest in serving again as commissioner. I believe you're the chairperson right now?
Yes.
For planning?
Yes.
We appreciate, you know, community members that are willing to step up and contribute to making a positive impact in our city. I'm going to begin with the questions.
Okay.
And so my question to you is, with so many ways to get involved, whether it's through commissions or local boards, what motivates you to return to the planning commission?
Well, it best fits a combination of my interest and experience professionally, prior to even being on the commission, plus it's a really good group. The issues that come up are interesting and because I probably got the longest tenure of the current commission, you know, I view myself, I guess, as somewhat of a leader in terms of doing that, but of all the commissions that are there, this is the one that fits best for me in terms of being able to volunteer and give back to the community.
Great, great. Thank you, Jerry. I'm going to pass it along to the vice mayor, Chan.
Hello, Mr. Schwartz. Thank you for your service so far and thank you for being here to reapply. What I was going to ask you is, especially since you have pretty extensive experience so far on the commission, is there a specific item that you're most proud of or an issue that you guys tackled and, or even in general, the general direction of the commission so far?
Well... That you really... There, yes. I guess, at this point, most of what we've been doing because of the economic difficulty of financing mixed-use projects, we've done a lot more housing than we have done commercial right now. And I think we really try to have high-quality residential and when possible, depending on development situations, if we can get affordable units into the projects, we do and we have. But quality projects in San Gabriel is first, is the, is the most important factor. And the commission works very hard to get high-quality projects and of course, the design review commission has a say in that as well, which is good. But it sees, it comes to us first and that's, that's very important.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Sure.
Councilmember Ding.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jerry. Thank you, continue to service our planning commissioner. Yeah, so you are current chair too, right?
Yes.
Okay. So based on your, because the last couple of years, we have a lot of the project and the increased commercial and the residential. So I think the community, it's, need a wellness about our traffic control. So for the design, do you have, how can you, we like balance the traffic situation?
It's a very good question. And a combination of factors. Sometimes there are, you know, there are streets that are widened or lights that are put into projects and often the city engineers, the city engineer will come to, will come to our meetings if it's, if it's, if there's a lot of that in a project or proposed in a project, to talk about how they see it in terms of their expertise, which can guide the commission. So that, so that traffic, it does not become a detriment just to get a project built. We have to have that balance.
Okay. Thank you.
Jerry, he's just going to adjust you so you can see Councilmember Herrera Avila a little better.
Thank you. You're welcome. Very much.
Then the mic, please. Councilmember Herrera Avila.
Yes. Commissioner and Chair Schwartz, thank you so much for your commitment and your knowledge that you bring to this commission. It surely is appreciated and valued. Wanted to pick your brain and your knowledge of how to get more people, more of the public involved, because I believe that public participation is very important, especially for this commission, to hear them. And I know it's a challenge to get anybody in the public to the commission meetings for any topic, even for city council meetings, but I would like to pick your brain and see what you can advise and relate, related to that.
Well, I've got, I've got kind of a, let me give you a two-part answer. On a meeting-to-meeting basis, of course, we publicize the meetings and I will open public comment and there'll be nobody in the audience. That's the short version. When we get to a point where we're going to have, be able to actually develop mixed-use, commercial and housing, those developers will need to go out there and get community support and have community meetings prior to coming to the planning commission. It's the, it's, on the bigger projects, when we're able to get those going, that's really the only way. And some of those developers who tried to do this earlier before the financing got tough did have community meetings and did have community support for some projects. So it'll be something that they'll have to do in the future and that's the best, I mean, that's, so they may not, it may not be coming to a commission meeting, but it may be coming to a public meeting on a project that's put on by a developer.
Anything that you feel the city can support, getting the word out? I mean, I think we're already doing a very good job and doing everything that we have to. Anything that you think that we could do better?
It's a good question. When we have, I think it depends again on the, almost the sexiness of the project. Sorry to use that word, but, but, I mean, again, somebody's going to build four units of housing, it's not really going to arouse much interest, except maybe from neighbors who don't want all the construction noise. And that, and that's a legitimate concern. But in terms of the bigger projects, that's when we'll get more input and hopefully some more participation as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wu.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Jerry. So good to see you here and thank you very much for serving our city. And I think this is very, I still remember that night that when we were in Padilla Room, we were talking about the density bonus, we're talking about the housing elements and all the plan. And my two question for you is, first, do you think that our city on the housing part is moving the right direction? And second is, if that is a phase one, so what you can see for the phase two for the development, development or planning for our city's future?
Well, yeah, the housing, I think, is going the right way. You know, as you know, a lot has been rezoned so that we can do what we can to meet our housing, the crazy numbers that the state assigns.
3,023.
Only known as RENA. RENA, yes. Right, but it's a crazy number, but it is RENA. The next phase, I guess, the question you have to, I guess, that bears asking is, is the, does the general plan need some sort of an update? Because I don't think it's been updated since like 2005, if I know, if I remember correctly.
I think I'm on the committee to be doing that, so, yeah. If it doesn't get done...
Not yet.
Yeah, not yet.
Next week.
It was sort of on the commission to do it. We'll see you next week.
But the answer, but answer to your question...
I was.
The next phase of the process may well be some sort of a general plan update. It's easy for me to say. I don't have to pay for it. I know it's expensive. I've been in this business, I was in this business, so I, I understand it's not cheap, but it's also, it has, it has its importance as well.
So so far, you have seen there are so many mixtures building up now. But for the limitation of our lands, we are, we are like a small city. And we, we are anticipating more populations moving in our city. Also, we are, our community population is, in the business community is growing as well. So, so you, do you think that making more high-rise, that will be a good solutions or bad solutions for the city because we need to accommodate so many people who intends to move into our city?
The answer is yes, but not just pure housing. What we really would like, I think, would be significant for this city, for the city of San Gabriel, is to have mixed use so that when you have a high-rise, that you have a base of restaurants, shops, grocery store, that kind of thing. So that it serves not only the residents there, but hopefully draws from other people in San Gabriel who can take advantage of some retail grocery store, workout play, you know, gym that we don't necessarily have anywhere else right now.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. And thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jerry. That concludes the interviewing session here. I want to, again, thank you for coming here, answering our questions. You have clearly a lot of insight. And, you know, again, you're welcome to stay. We will be taking the vote shortly or otherwise someone will contact you.
No, I'll stay.
Okay. Would someone like to assist?
I have Sam coming.
Oh, thank you, Sam. I'm sorry, I didn't see Sam. I was going to ask the city attorney to share any insight regarding the applicant... That was not able to be here for work reasons. Could you just share some, some information to the council, please?
You know, Mayor, if I may, you know, if we can get the city to double-check that the audio is okay, because last time that happened to me and the audio completely, I went back to the footage and it's completely wiped. So if we could check that for the, you know, for the people that are not watching.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Councilmembers, you do have a candidate, Gary Liu, who was not able to make it. Attendance at the interviews is not a requirement of appointment. You do have information containing your packets about Mr. Liu. And should you desire to cast a vote for him, you are legally permitted to do so. There is no, no restrictions in that regard.
Thank you, Martin. Okay, so does any council member have any questions for staff before we take a vote on this commission? I see none, so let's take the vote and give it to our assistant city clerk. I see none, so let's take the vote and give it to our Assistant City Clerk.
The votes are in, and we have four votes for Feng Li, one vote for Gary Liu, and five votes for Jerry Schwartz.
Thank you so much. Okay, so our last one doesn't require any interviews because the staff had requested to appoint Howard Fong and Douglas Richter to the Civil Service Commission to ensure continuity because of the hearings that are taking place right now. Are there any questions or deliberations that any councilmember would like to have?
Mayor, just for, just for a point of clarity, do we have to vote on those recommendations?
Well, I was just to see if we, if I can get a motion to approve these appointments as opposed to having to go through this...
Okay.
Is that your question?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so since I see no questions, do I have a motion to approve these two appointments?
I move to approve.
Okay, I have it first, second?
A second.
Okay, second. So let's vote. Is this working?
Yes, it is working.
Okay. Oh, guess not. Do we have some technical difficulties here?
Is it not working for you?
There we go. Okay.
All right, let me...
For the appointments of, of the two?
Civil Service.
Yeah. We have to...
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Okay, thank you. So now we have to vote on...
On the results that are displayed, yeah.
Okay, so do we need to repeat them, or can we just look at them on the screen?
Any of the councilmembers have any questions regarding the results? So the results, based on the vote, would be Mr. Chang, Ms. Romo, Ms. Tu, for the...
I, I can announce it, yes. The, the votes are, for the Civil Service Commission, we have Howard Fong and Douglas Richter. For the Design Review Commission, we have Raymond Chang, or Linda Romo, and Luya Tu. For the Historic Preservation and Cultural Resource Commission, we have Kyle DeVrain, Eric Uraina, and Eric Weeks. And for the Planning Commission, we have Feng Li and Jerry Schwartz.
Is there anything more, City Attorney? We're done?
Yep.
Okay, great. So make a motion.
In a second.
In a second. So I need a motion to approve the, what is it called? The appointments.
I'll move to approve.
Need a second? Okay. Let's vote.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Wonderful. Okay, so before I conclude, I just wanted to, just say that I think it was a very productive evening, meeting everyone. I think there was some real learning moments for all of us. I know I was taking notes. I think Samantha, who's kind of the stand-in tonight, is also taking notes. I would encourage my colleagues too, if, if there's things in particular you would like to share with the city manager, to feel free to email him, but I know I will. I really appreciate, you know, we are very fortunate to have these commissioners. They, just their experience and, and their passion, they really do care about our city, so I, I just, just feel very, very fortunate. And so the next city meeting, city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 15th, 2025, at 6:00 PM. And so more information will be coming 6:00 PM.
Oh, not 6:30?
Not 6:30, 6:00 PM. So, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
What time? Seven, good, good.